Let's just test that real quick before we go much further. Nikki, if you can hear us now. Okay, good. Thank you, Matt.
Very good. Thank you. So the planning effort for this has been long term. Almost 20 years in the making and the city recently applied for and received approval for a $4.6 million community development block grant through the PIR program administered by the Oregon Department of Housing and Community Services to fund infrastructure work for not only the Gateway site, but some adjacent roads, Gagnes Street and Wagner Street Extension. That grant funding is for infrastructure work, not for the development of the site. So part of what we need to do at this juncture, as that funding has been approved and we've started down the path of undertaking the environmental work precedent to being able to spend that money. Some decisions need to be made, at least in a more detailed concept as to what the gateway site, what uses would be occurring on the gateway site, how it might be configured. Some discussion needs to be held on the Wagner Extension, which is designed into the West Valley View Plan, but which has not been agreed upon by the Talented Irrigation District. In fact, they've suggested some alternative alignments for that street. I need to bring those to your attention. We've asked OHCS and their consultant ICF to include those alignments, those alternative alignments in their environmental work. They could not start work until they were able to cover all of the properties that might ultimately be included in the project. And while those, all three alignments certainly would not be built, rather than delay the work on all of the environmental going forward, we elected to have them include all three alignments. So the scope of the environmental work is larger than had been planned, but it's just a matter of finding that state wants to get it going on the environmental work. So that is a topic that needs to be visited by the agency and the council. It's also important to distinguish here that the PIR project is a grant to the City of Talent, not to the Urban Renewal Agency. At some point, we will need to develop some interagency agreements between the two entities. As we have a situation where Tura owns the Gateway site and the city has been granted funds to undertake the infrastructure work on that site owned by Tura. And ultimately, a decision needs to be made as to whether the development that occurs on the site will be approved and undertaken by the city or by Tura. And the other parts of the project, Wagner Street and Gagnes are not owned by Tura. Those are properties that ultimately would be owned by the City of Talent. So we've got a sort of a mix in the project and the way it's funded and the ownership. That's not on the list of decisions to talk about tonight, but just wanted to make you aware that there are some loose ends that need to be resolved in terms of who's doing what and who owns what.
Can I just ask a quick technical question? Did Tura or the city, I, Tura bought the Wagner Street Extension property, right? I mean, that, I, I know there's a swap that needs to happen, but the, the property that we have that is owned by Tura or by the city?
The property that is intended to be swapped to the adjoining property owner that's currently owned by Tura.
Okay, that's really, I know about the pending swap, but.
The street that would be built on that site, built by the city.
Right, but the, there would still need to be a conveyance of that property as well. Okay, all right.
There are various ways to do that, that to a good way the property should be now. It'll help clean that up, but that's a detail that will come soon. So essentially, four concept plans were developed for the gateway that are more than just sketch. A very rough concept plan included in the West Valley View Vision Master Plan in 2006. This plan included a mix of three-story buildings, some of which will include residential over commercial, two commercial buildings and a park at the intersection of West Valley View and Highway 99. Another very conceptual site plan in elevation included in the 2019 request for proposals, which appears to be very similar to the later Walker-Macye plan. Then the Walker-Macye plan came along in 2020, to the best I can tell, it may have been started earlier. And called for more of a separation of uses with more open space. The plan included two development options, one of which would include 20 townhomes and 42 apartments, and which would include 90 apartments. Both options include two commercial and one mixed-use commercial housing building. Finally, the latest was the Salazar Plan, which emerged from the 2022 Talent Concept Master Plan in Site Feasibility Study, and that plan called for a denser development, more flexibility in unit types, and inclusion of lift order units. This plan offered two development options, one of which included four mixed-use buildings and a mix of residential types, including two-story stacked flats, two-story townhomes, narrow lot single-family homes, and three single-family homes. Three mixed-use buildings and a mix of residential types. It totaled out at 81 units dwelling. The central open space area would be substantially smaller than the Walker-Macye plan, and there are no standalone commercial structures in the plan. Also, all commercial area is a mixed-use building. Staff has conferred with the advisors at Salazar and Cosmon Companies, a California-based economic development and real estate advisor. The comments we received from them include, one, that free land is the subsidy needed for affordable housing. That residential development over first-floor commercial, they've longer, they no longer be a viable model. I've asked Jennifer and I, and also Matt, to comment on that topic that we'll come back to. And the few builders and developers have experience in building and maintaining successful mixed-use projects, particularly in spaulding. But the prevailing wage requirements would apply to the commercial portion of the building, which would impact the affordability of housing. And the lenders typically do not like a ground-for-commercial upper-floor residential model as there have been too many failures in trying to sustain that. And this type of mixed use of more viable and high-density urban environments where there's a shortage of commercial might. Just wanted to put those thoughts from those who are actually engaged in the business of it for you. So tonight, I'm hoping to get out of the session, but some input that will help us lead to a decision. Come up with a more refined, a concept plan that we can start to develop a, the next generation of RFP around. So input, that's, that we'd like to get here from you tonight. I'm not going to take them all at once, but I'll mention the topics each individually here to start. One is, one is dealing with the house, the type of the housing. Who do we see occupying this housing space? What's the housing? Commercial, single-story mixed-use, what types of commercial uses are preferred? We'll get further into that as we approach the commercial part. The open space, what kind of open space do we want to see included in this property? And a couple of questions to deal with on that category. And is there a preferred, is there an existing preferred concept plan? The Salazar Plan, preferred, some iteration of the Walker-Macye Plan, is that kind of the preferred concept? Neither one, some combination of the two, or is there, and is there a preferred architectural theme? I'll touch, touch on that as we go along here. And then finally, to talk a little bit about how environmental issues need to be addressed in the RFP. So I want to start with how that is a key, the key, really the key element of this. And I've outlined here kind of what different types of housing might be located on that site. In the past, it's included some of all of it. But ownership housing, own-house type housing, rental housing, apartments, senior rental housing, the most type of development. Modular destruction, we've had some inquiries from folks who construct concrete modular housing with the ability to create a new facade. Should they be multi-story? The height limitations on the site is 50 feet, which could accommodate a five, a four- to five-story building. What, what we see, what is our vision? Or the dimensions of the site, to be a very large dominant structure? Is it to be more low-key? I only, I've attached a little discussion with different housing definitions. And at this point, I'd like to bring in a little discussion of a commercial and ask Jennifer, if this on the line, for you, there's Jennifer. If she can hear us.
Yeah, I can hear you. Hello.
Jennifer, good to you, and then I'm going to call on Matt as well. Talked a little bit about the mixed-use concept of commercial and the housing, with commercial being on the ground floor and housing above. And how you, the Salazar firm views that and its feasibility? Maybe talk about that a little bit with.
Yeah, I think, you know, it's, mixed-use housing is a great urban design strategy. I, I live in an mixed-use building, but they're, they're really difficult to develop financially, especially if it's an affordable housing project. The affordable housing developers are, there's very few who can do a mixed-use building with commercial space within it. Usually, they end up with just spaces that serve their residents because of the financial complexities of their funding sources and, and their tax credit investors. Additionally, insurance has gotten really expensive for multifamily buildings. And when you add in the, the mixed-use com, component, it makes it even more complicated and expensive. So when we see RFPs go out for mixed-use developments, it's a pretty, you really narrow your opportunity for what developers will propose on it, and you end up with a very small pool of people who can deliver successfully mixed-use projects. If you can parcel out the site into more use-based areas and have each piece be, you know, separated for different developers, that would likely lead to more success and stronger developers or development teams coming together.
Yeah, I would agree with, I would agree with what Jennifer just said and provide a little bit of local context. There haven't been a lot of mixed-use projects in this region. Ashland has some mixed-use building. Those are primarily $750,000 condos over retail commercials, the exception of a building that was recently constructed, housed employees, actors, and so forth at, at onset, which is an interesting concept, probably very unique, as Jennifer mentioned. With mixed use, you really start to narrow the number of developers who are interested in developing that type of development. And also, you're kind of limited in contractors and things like that, who have the expertise to be able to that execute that kind of development. Central Point had a mixed-use project 15 some years ago in downtown. It's since finally achieved the mixed-use component of Clint Crease Development, but both pretty limited. In Metford, the first mixed-use project constructed since there was mixed-use built in downtown was built out on Cedar Links. So if you've ever been by that development at Cedar Links in Plutillo, that is the first mixed-use project in the city of Metford. Of course, it's a much larger community, albeit, you know, relatively close to the City of Talent, other talent, other towns within this region. And the commercial component of that project has yet to be occupied. So, and, and that's, I think, a function of, of how much they're asking for rents. And those rents are driven by how much it costs to develop that project. So it is more expensive, more difficult to do, particularly in a market this small relatively. So you would see something like that in order in a market like Eugene or Portland, metro Portland. Here it's a little bit more difficult to do, but, you know, there are some things that you can do. You could build first-floor space to commercial code, and it could be occupied for residential initially. You could also try to offset those costs with vertical housing, development zone, which is the tax-abating program. It's used, it hasn't been used very much across the entire state, probably because it doesn't do enough to offset those costs, but that is something that is available. Horizontal mixed-use, as Jennifer said, I think is a good alternative because it does provide those mix, the mixes of uses that residents will, will want, that will attract residents and provide services and things like that. So it kind of achieves that goal and maybe some other goals that it can achieve as well by providing non-residential, commercial space that you might have in either of the four. So whether that's, you know, a business operator or something like that, something that you might want to do that might not fit into the context of first-floor commercial mixed-use building, but that opportunity is still there horizontal mixed-use neighborhood.
Oh, I'll take Councilor Penelope.
Yeah, I just want to clarify. So by horizontal, if we're going to apply that to the gateway, it would be like kind of carving it up and having, we could have commercial next door to some multifamily housing. So like you say, it would be in the same neighborhood and would need to carve up the site. And essentially, here's a commercial developer, you take this, residential developer, take that. So my question is also, if let's say one of those buildings in the residential side was multifamily, we could still have like a community center or community room, you know, for example, if it was going to be some, something like that, or even offices that would just be res, not built to commercial grade. Is that still something that you can do in a multifamily? Family uh residential building?
Yeah, I think you do that, and Jennifer probably has uh an opinion on this as well, but. Uh for the purposes of like prevailing wage, for example, there are certain non-residential uses that. You can include in that building envelope, uh that will not adversely affect your work.
I- is it just prevailing rate or is it also the, just the um, the standard to which you have to build commercial on the ground floor?
I think it would also be the, well, you would have to go with commercial standards.
Right, which is more expensive anyway, but not just because prevailing wage.
But in a multifamily building, you're really applying that, um that, like a higher level anyway, so.
Okay.
Building provides your kind of stuff at that level, uh depending on how, how high you go, you know, how many stories you have. Um how your occupancy loads work, so you know, there are ways to avoid things like. Stairs and things like that, elevators, those are all kinds of high occupancy load and happy floors, you know, but Jennifer probably can speak to that.
Okay, I, I think as we go further along, I would have some more questions, but probably not at this point, I'm not.
I, I do want to mention, uh just for context, I think we abandoned, um even though this is called a mixed use development property, like I think. I think we abandoned the idea a long time ago of building commercial on the bottom and housing on top, that's my memory. And I, but the last RFP probably would answer this better, and I think we were at one point in time talking about. Um flex space, you're talking, you know, the space down on the bottom floor that is built as housing but could be. In fact, I saw it in the Salazar thing, uh flexible use. Um flexible units for live-work concepts, but um so I. Um I, my question about flex space is. Uh if you build flex space, did you say to Eleanor maybe already that if you build flex space, it would or it would not trigger the prevailing wage?
That's a good question. Um if it were built to commercial, you know, like a commercial storefront or, you know, you feel that eventually it could be. Um a commercial high frequency, but it's occupied first. Uh by a residential and um I don't know, I don't know how uh fully it's that.
Um and then. It'd be a good question, right? Um a- and then if you look at the Concord Building in Medford, it has a. Childcare facility or did the last time I looked. And I'm not sure if that's a commercial endeavor or not, but would that trigger prevailing wage? Is, would that be considered commercial space?
Yeah, that's what it goes.
Jennifer, you have any thoughts, observations on those last couple of questions?
Uh no, I agree, uh daycare or uh childcare would trigger um prevailing wages. Um live-work, we haven't seen um affordable projects. Include live-work units, um so I don't know the answer to whether it would trigger commercial prevailing. Um when we have seen them, they, those units essentially are kind of a write-off for the developers, because they can't um include them. Um in some of their financials, so.
So did I understand correctly that um, well, I mean, I think in the context of the report, the flex space was. For the purpose of live-work, um and so I guess the que- the question still remains whether or not the, if it was built. As how, so flex space is built as housing with commercial standards, would that trigger prevailing wage?
Yeah, and I think with that, you need a specific bully determination, and I just haven't seen one on a project. I mean, the buildings usually live-work projects are built to residential standards, um usually the work is a small enough component. That that's the typical process. Um but, but bully um. Makes very specific determinations on each project, so.
Okay, thank you. Uh so we're still talking about housing types, right? Uh is there any more questions from council about housing types? Councilor Penamara?
Yeah, I think I read somewhere in one of those smart studies thing that when you're talking about um multifamily, um that. It's like up to three stories and then like the fourth story is make, it makes the pencil out so much better, something like that, is there kind of a. An optimal from a financial point of view, an optimal height for a residential?
I don't know.
Well.
Yeah, Jennifer, probably.
Sure, um I would, I would say you can do a three-story building without an elevator. Um so we, we are seeing a fair amount of three-story product getting built right now. Um it, what that means is, you know, you really are saying just the ground floor is accessible to, to see, to. Uh people who are mobility, mobility impaired, so whether that's seniors or people with disabilities. Um if you want a more inclusive building, you would include an elevator, and at that point, you probably should just go ahead and go to four stories. Um above four stories, um on the affordable side, does trigger the commercial prevailing, so. That's a pretty big jump.
Thank you. Can you say that last piece again?
Yeah, if you go above four stories, it, it triggers the commercial prevailing wages, and that's a pretty big financial jump on a project.
Great. Councilor Prestizo and then Councilor Bi- or Member Prestizo and the Member Buyers.
I'm wondering, um if we go with three stories, you would have to designate the first floor. A certain amount of units for ADI appliances or something like that, or that's just the options and if they're not full with someone. They're just out of luck, I'm just curious.
Yeah, you, you have to design a certain percentage to be um a higher level of what they call adaptability. Um you don't have to reserve them for people with disabilities, they just um are designed to a higher level. Adaptableness, um like lower countertops and that kind of thing, so they, they tend to lease last. Because of the accommodations that have been made for them, so they tend to become, they tend to be on the market longer for people and. Hopefully will meet somebody with a disability.
One that came up and it made me think about. If we go down the path of not mixed use, but separate residential, separate commercial. Would the commercial buildings be single-story or would they likely be multiple stories? And is there a pro or con to that?
I don't know.
It's a good one, one that people wanna ask you, what is the wording setting that would allow? Very desirable, and a single-story and a free standard, and it's not multi-tenant. Um and you know, you see like uh Sherwood Williams Paint Stores, for example. Like that's, that's a uh commercial uh product that investors like to buy and sell. So beyond that, I think it really comes down to marketing. Uh because, you know, they have a need for certain kinds of commercial space, office, not a lot, something like that, that. Uh that are needed in this region, um other kinds of commercial space, maybe not so much like retail or commercial. Um where, you know, we've seen since the pandemic, I think that continued kind of reduction in the commercial retail space. Uh that is, that is being absorbed in this market, but other kinds of commercial spaces, that's something that we. Probably people are looking at, these now would be studied.
Um my first question was, um I'm hearing you discuss the. The penciling out of uh apartment buildings by stories, but I'm wondering also if that discussion could just go by unit. Instead of by story, and the reason why I ask is just a four-story building is quite an imposing building on ninety-nine, especially if it's the whole building. I'm wondering if um like, it could be like. I'm wondering if it's more units so that like the entirety of the building may not have to be four stories to be able to have the. The penciling out of the number of units within that structure um work the same way, so that's one question I have. And I'll pause there, before I.
So I think only the four stories that Jennifer was mentioning has all sorts of other costs associated with it. Prevailing wage, but also an elevator, uh for example, which are not achieving both the upfront capital cost and ongoing operations. Which affects your pro, pro, pro forma overall. Um and so, you know, what I've seen in the past with fire studies in this region for the city of Menford, for example. Uh was that the region generally speaking is at a point where um income. And cost of construction, you know, the actual cost of construction, lumber and labor and. You know, interest rates, things like that, um are at a point where three-story walk-up construction is really feasible. Um but we're really not at a point regionally where going above three stories. Or doing three stories over commercial or over parking, uh makes a lot of sense. And the other part of that too is this issue of affordability. So as you go to a more expensive building product, uh becomes less portable, you have to have. Uh the rents that would support those additional floors and additional units, so in some sense, it doesn't. It doesn't make sense to become more dense, uh if you're trying to achieve, you know, affordability, but also have reasonable. Density and a reasonable number of units, um that would make it all very, very good. And I think at three stories, you can still get really good density, uh particularly if you're looking at smaller units, studios, one-bedders. Which are really in high density, houses get smaller and smaller and smaller.
Uh can I follow up to that? Uh just for considerations, we're having this discussion, um Matt did bring up a great point of parking, I think that we should consider. Or look at the impact of having parking on the, as the ground floor of structures, just because. We, it could help us maximize what we do in that space. And then my, my second comment is a note, again, I know we aren't at this discussion point now, but for staff. Just in a very informal conversation with age plus, I was asking about their various projects and one. Project that they're piloting right now is um a multi-story development where it's. Senior housing on the ground floor and then housing for people. Who are younger on the upper floors with the intention of creating their like circles of care and community in the, between those floors. Which could be um something to think about or get more information.
Member Colleen?
Yeah, thanks for bringing up parking and bringing it up again, uh my questions around that, what are the. Current limitations or requirements, or what's the parking situation for the various types of uh? Housing to be built on the property?
Well, oh. I didn't, I didn't bring my coat.
I don't think it requires parking, say, uh with the passage of uh. Administrative rules. Um but that doesn't mean that. Uh we want that, but um and it's really finding that. Probably a place where in the RFP, that's something that uh responded, uh would maybe try to justify to. Also, with the CPAC goals, parking has become more expensive to develop. So it now has to be forty percent of it has to be shaded, there's some alternatives that you can. Uh implement with um offsetting that with solar, things like that, but it just generally increases the cost of parking, so it's not. Just as inexpensive as it used to be, and so I think developers are probably more in careful. They're not gonna overpark the route, I think that's sort of the theory sometimes for that, but I think that's something you would wanna look at in the RFP and. Uh as uh Gary was saying earlier, um you can put some language into the RFP that talks about. Other goals aside from like, you know, housing affordability and uh providing these other commercial uses. Um about environmental stewardship, the city does, uh for example, you know, has this, has passed this resolution recently. About eliminating fossil fuel appliances, residential development, and so, you know, there are any number of things. That could incorporate in RFP that could lose its score, uh response to being perceived, and parking is one of the.
Ask a follow-up to that?
Yeah, but I do want to really quick out, uh are, are we sure that Gateway is in the CFA though?
Well, it's not just that it's in the CFA, it's within. Uh within order or a hack module of a high-frequency transit.
Yeah.
Uh and Route ten is maybe the only high-frequency gaming transit order. Uh so yeah, for that reason.
And uh, okay.
Yeah, my, my follow-up was just to, you had mentioned the, you know, parking on the first floor and the stories above, is that something that's. Economically feasible still, are people still building that, or what's kind of the common, with, given all those limitations that you brought up and to move without shading? Um what kind of parking are people building?
I think I'll, I'll defer to Jennifer, but one project in downtown Medford has. Tuck under parking, so not under the entire first floor, but just under a part of the, of the floor. In fact, there are two, Stuart Meadows does that, the developer I know has complained considerably about having. Done that, it cost them so much more than they said to build it, I, I don't know.
Yeah, so I would say the, uh parking under the building is, is very expensive. Um it requires a concrete, typically it's done with a concrete podium. Um and so it's, the, the material itself is really expensive, it extends the construction timeline. And, and then um for affordable projects, there's no income that comes with that parking. So um it's, it's very expensive, um even in Portland, it's hard to get those projects to work out. Um we have, I have done some tuck-under parking um in my career. It is more expensive um than just surface parking, but it is less expensive uh by far. Than a full parking garage under the building, um a full podium, so um. I would, you know, I think the way you can, I mean, if there's a very strong preference for parking in the building, I think that should be stated, but otherwise. I think, um you know, stating kind of what the goals are for the project from the, from the um council and the community. Um and letting the developer kind of figure out how to meet those goals and how to meet their parking demand, you'll have. Your, your market rate parking typically has a much higher parking demand than affordable housing. So that will also drive your, your parking record, um needs on the site.
Uh then buyer?
Just to that point, as we're discussing this like horizontal use mixed space, I could see um. Tenants in the commercial space being less enthusiastic about leasing somewhere where their clientele may have. Not be able to find parking, and so that delineation of space for who is using the overall Gateway project land, I think. Long-term could be valuable, but that's just.
So.
Other question?
So what kinds of housing, I mean, you've. You've been thinking about the Gateway project for a long time. Uh what kind of housing comes to your mind? What did you envision? The housing in the gateway?
Seventy-four, I think it was one of the seventy-four, it was seventy-four, it comes to that seventy-four. Um showed a pretty good, I, you know, Eleanor, I think, or members, um, I think we were around most of those. I think maybe everybody was here for the Salazar. But um.
I don't think.
Okay, but the um. The plan shows, you know, the commercial on the highway, so the, the tall buildings on the highway, the internal. And um and it shows townhomes or single-family dwellings. Looks like about ten of them. And then the, and if I remember correctly, the building is in the middle of the taller building. And then in terms of housing type, I recall that it was all workforce housing, but I could be wrong.
Sorry, what page are you on? Is it the PDF page seventy-four?
If you have your packet open.
Yeah, I do. Okay.
What's the page number on the app store?
It doesn't have numbers.
It doesn't have numbers. But you're talking about the PDF page seventy-four. Thanks.
Yeah. That's it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, thanks.
So I, um, that's about as far as we, I mean, I think this is the most, uh, the furthest along we've gotten on the planning of, up to this point. I mean, if that's helpful. And just show a lot of parking and although I think the, if I remember correctly, the measure they use would be the point seven five or point five zero for, you know. Member buyer?
To me, before we answer that question, it, I, at least before I answer that question, I would like to have a better understanding of current housing needs in talent and an updated housing needs analysis.
I don't think our timeline double letters.
Let us do that at all.
Yeah, um, if you look at the timeline, the year you're talking for.
Right.
Um, and we've done so much work around it, like this, this is, we're pretty far down the road. I, um, when I said ten houses, down here, I think there's more. So there's some down here in the lower corner of the picture.
Yeah, I just wanted to say on page seventy-two is a colored version of that, which I'm having an easier time with. I think it's the same thing.
Shows the same stuff, but that one's stormwater related.
And I do, to your point about the housing needs analysis, which is a very good point. I think the other thing is that we, we're not, we don't have a lot of flexibility here. This is pretty high density, you know, can't go single-family dwellers. But we can't change housing types very much.
No, I think the discussion was more like percentages of workforce housing versus affordable housing and that sort of thing.
Yeah, what about ownership versus renting?
Yeah, we had a lot of these discussions, I don't know where the information is, but I, I don't think any of it was set in stone. It can be, I think, if we had a competition around this plan, it was definitely a mix.
Right.
And I remember the townhomes were going to be for sale. And, uh, and then, you know, there's proposed rental product there as well on the, in the multifamily housing. And so it was, as I recall, in this plan, it was mixed. That doesn't mean that's what it has to be moving forward, that's a good baseline to start is what, where we're moving. And this was post, this was post-fire.
It was.
That's done in twenty-two?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh.
Member, member Colleen?
Yeah, so my recollection is that the townhomes were market rate. And then we were kind of talking about, you know, affordable with the capital or workforce. Yeah, and I think, you know, basically, we just didn't want to price people out and do as sustainably and as efficiently as we could, all those things. Question, my question is, when you build it, is it built differently? If you decide to rent it or allow ownership? Can you, in other words, can you change your mind?
I mean, I, I think it would come down to, you know, your sort of fixtures, finishes that would make a difference in the, like, the foundation construction. And that would be something that, you know, the developer, a decision that they would make. Although, you know, you could have a development agreement in place which required certain things. Um, and that could be negotiated. But, you know, as a rental operator, you probably want finishes that are high quality because you don't want to have to replace them very often at all. It's why the housing board in Jackson County, you know, actually spends money on higher quality finishes and fixtures. But, yeah, I think that's something that you'd like to develop. And maybe even the choice of ownership versus rental is something that you might leave open in the RFP. And, you know, have the developer have to respond and make that case. This is what we have found the market to support, demand. And then, um, using that information, make a selection. And, you know, I, I think everybody in this room would agree that there is a need for housing that's affordable to households at eighty percent and below and households that are, that are housing that's affordable at eighty to one-twenty in that workforce middle housing.
I think that's what we defined as workforce housing.
And this had to be the way that like OHCS would define it, looking at their various kind with the other incentive programs, so.
One of the things that I think we should consider when we're talking about this is we have, we recently, talent has recently had a couple of developers come in and do low-income housing. Forty to sixty, I think, is, is what they were building. I could be wrong. But you have Anderson Vista was, which was a rebuild. You have Renaissance Flats, which was a new build. And even though I know we still have not built back the number of low-income housing units that we lost, that still hasn't gotten us back to that number. Those are the housing types that, those are some of the housing types that we've, that we've built. And so when you consider that, and then you consider that at some point, perhaps in the near future, we'll be annexing in TA five, which is all medium-density housing, medium-density being single-family dwellings. The missing middle is, is potentially what we're, what we're missing to your, to your question about, you know, or to your comment about missing, you know, missing middle housing, really. And so, you know, I would hope that we would do at least this, that we would say, you know, I, I think workforce housing is important for the community. We haven't built much of the, well, I don't know, we'd have to do an analysis, but we are providing housing for, you know, the, the teachers and the, you know, the, the workforce. Eighty to one-twenty would be a, a good thing to focus on. And create, and goes on the rental and the ownership side is what I hope we do. But I, what I would like for this board to consider is that the RFP, RFP says something along the lines of that rental housing has to be included, whether that is a mix of rental housing and ownership or all rental housing. I would hope it would not be all rental housing. I think that ownership component of what it looks like about fifteen units here is critical to this, to this project. But I would hate for us to say it's all ownership because I think that will really change the whole design.
Question for you, Darby. Are you saying that the, the individual townhouses, the ownership, are you saying those need to be eighty to one-twenty percent affordable? Or are those market rate?
Yeah, I recall they're market rate.
To pencil out, I think that.
I think that's how we were able to get the eighty to one-twenty to pencil was that we had market rate, that we were considering.
Okay, so that was because we, we felt we needed it to make it work for a potential developer, but.
Right.
I mean, I'm wondering. I'm, I'm wondering if we're open if a potential developer comes and says, well, no, actually, I could just, you know, these could still be, they'd be like a little bit smaller, or they'd be duplexes or something like that. And we could still keep everything. But within workforce, within that range. I mean, I would be in favor of that. I think we went to market how, um, to market rate because, to, to make it work for a developer. But if a developer came along and said ownership, but it can still be workforce, that would be great.
And I think neighbor, yeah, and if I remember correctly, Neighbor Works, was that? Yeah, Neighbor Works some part came and looked, looked at this project. And they believed that they would be able to do all of the housing at workforce level. Cause they're nonprofit. And they, that was just what they were saying off the cuff. That's what I recall. I could be wrong, but.
Were we talking about the land for free at that point?
Yes. Well, I think it was the land for a dollar, which is the same.
It's a dollar.
So. I mean, I think it's almost impossible to answer the question without, and, without a, a mix, an analysis of the mix that makes it work. And then I think it does change between a for-profit developer and a nonprofit developer. Well, member Postizo?
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear, as you guys talked, are you talking about workforce just in those condominiums or for the whole development, you just want workforce and no?
Yeah, I think no low income is what we're saying because we already have some low income in, in the city.
But wouldn't a person who has the apartment have to be low income? Isn't that a requirement?
Not for workforce housing, not for eighty-one-twenty. And because, because here's the, here's the difference of I understand it, and this, I found it very helpful. Correct me if I'm wrong, when you're building in the eighty to one-twenty range, it's not typically like subsidized housing with these real intense limits. I mean, there are some, when you're, there is income limits, that's what I mean. So when you're building at eighty to one-twenty, you have to qualify from that standpoint. But they don't have the same kind of income limits like, say, Renaissance Flats has. And so, yeah, I, I found that helpful to know.
That's, that's.
And it's also taxable, right? It's also taxable, right? Yeah, it provides revenue to the city as well. Which was a big reason for going, well, I don't know if it was a big reason for going with all workforce, but at minimum, nothing less than workforce. Cause we talked about the gateway being a revenue generator, the entire property being a revenue generator. I'm sorry, and what were you saying?
The middle home, and of course, taxes. Any other home in the city?
Yeah. Member Colleen?
Yeah, just one general question I have. I know we don't have time to do a market analysis. And we've done a lot of previous work on this, but are there any projects like this in the valley going on? And if so, what are they doing? Or is this an oddity?
No, I think there are other projects like this. Network, you know, expanded its urban growth down there a few years ago. And so there are projects like this that are, that are going through various lengths and times right now. Haven't been built, obviously. But you can see, like, Kings Highway, Kings Highway, South State Road, Northwest Corner. There are small lot, single-family attached, um, uh, homes with an ABU. So it's a, similar to this, that whole, that whole area is supposed to be built out like this, but the mixed use, even the horizontal mixed use component that obviously not that built yet, so. But I think this is something that, that you'll see more and more of it. And even within that eight to one-twenty range, there's probably, it probably works. Particularly with like a single family, a two-townhouse kind of, kind of building.
One comment I want to make when we talk about housing is this, if you look at page seventy-two, this is kind of the result of a lot of planning. I mean, a lot of these discussions, we had, we had, I think, three town halls with community. And so there was, I mean, there was quite a bit of thought that went into this design. And, you know, you look at the townhomes and they're closest to Gangness. They're closest to the single-family dwellings. And then as you move closer to the highways, you get into the higher density and then you get to the commercial right on the highway. So there was a lot of thought. And what I, what I would like to look, kind of turn the perspective a little bit about is what do we think there was anything about the fire that either compels us to do something different? And then the question is what and why? Or does it actually make this design more useful? And I, I mean, off the cuff, I can, I can see this design and I, I look at the development along Gangness and feel like this is actually more in alignment with the new development in Gangness. Like, you just walk the houses, like, there's townhomes, or there's, there's that, what is it, a fourplex or something that's right there, that are two-story? There's like, there's a lot of this type of housing along Gangness now. And, um, and it's, and a, and a lot of it's workforce type housing. You know, it's the smaller townhomes, it's this, I think of, um, one of your family members.
The duplex that's on there.
Yeah, exactly. So. Yeah, I, I, I feel like this is such a really good starting point, if, if, from my view, especially in light of the fact that it seems to be more in alignment with what happened post-fire, not less. Like, like it doesn't, I, I don't see it driving us away. If anything, I think the only thing that I think would be maybe something to talk more about is the commercial, how, how much commercial we've got on it. We've got a ton of commercial on it. And I wouldn't want to do that now because that's an upcoming topic. But, um, but that would, if, if we decided to look at reducing the amount of commercial, it would be interesting to talk about how you would do that and turn some of that stuff right along the highway into housing, you know, without just being like, your bedroom is looking over the fourth lane of ninety-nine. But, I mean, at one point in time, there was actually a multi, maybe this is what you were thinking about too. There was a multi-story building in that lower corner. And it was away from the highway a little bit. And I think there was some kind of buffer there, but. But yeah, this, this, this still looks like very, if not more in my mind, very applicable post-fire, except for the commercial piece. Any other comments? So are we answering any of your questions?
That's it.
Yeah.
Good information.
And what about style? Do you want to talk about style?
Well, let's talk about, uh.
Do you want to go down that, that list that you have?
Sure, we can talk about style and then talk a little bit about commercial and who should own it. So.
I.
We want to have an architectural theme.
We want to have a what?
An architectural theme.
Yeah. And was that under housing or under commercial?
For all.
Okay.
I, I just have one more question. Before you totally dive into that. Remind me if the goal for talent is to have a park within every quarter mile of a house? You, do you remember that from the Park Master Plan? Which I have read so much.
Yes. It might be a quarter mile, but wouldn't.
I believe it's a quarter mile. Old Town Park is three miles away.
Is it?
Just to let the.
What about the tiniest park? You know, that, that.
Footprints though is a little closer, right? Freakside footprints, pathway park?
Yeah, and in fact, there'll be a pathway right to it, along ninety-nine.
Well, I, I.
And you turn right.
I do appreciate the point you bring up because it does, we did talk a lot about a little bit of open space in that. And I really hope that we can talk about the plaza for that as well, that.
Right.
The dead zone, I call it.
Right.
So that, you know, we have, I, I think where we landed with, and I'm just operating off of memory and I could be wrong, or maybe I'm just wishful thinking, but we did kind of land in this more dense, dense design, believing that there is something that can be done with that, that. And for your purposes, Matt, it's just north of, it's at twelve o'clock on the roundabout.
Okay.
So there's a plaza there, that's the dead zone.
It's right in front of TID.
So making that some kind of open space there without doing anything to that, well, it's tiniest park. But we're going to have one angry.
Austrian.
Austrian resident, yes.
Transplant.
Yes, she's. Yes, she's, um, she's, uh, but rightfully so. That's a really great, wonderful thing. Anyway. Uh, so yeah, open, open space being part of that discussion. Um, so let's get back to Gary's question of um, design. Does anybody have any? Um, you made some suggestions and what page is that on for design?
Five, or is that just the next?
No, it was in the report somewhere I read.
It's in the, the staff report.
Page five is where the question and the four different wine village, camelot, craftsmen, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, yeah. So those are, those are examples of the kind of. You know, um, there, I, I, I think what, what is an interesting question is. Is it far enough away from the Old Town District where we break away from the craftsmen look? And if the answer is no, it's still so connected and that, and that should probably be. Is it, it's not in the architectural review, is it? I think it isn't, but. No, but you'd be su- but wouldn't you be subject to the design standards?
Well, I thought that.
Are you talking about the gateway? I'm talking about the gateway. So the housing design on the gateway, if it's in the architectural review. District, it would be subject to the design standard of architecture.
It's an old town, yeah.
Yeah, so there you, um, so there you have it. It's subject to the design standards. Or the design recommendations. I mean, to, to, to break away from those design standards would be a land use action. The, the redesignated outside of the Old Town District, that's what it would say.
That's fine. We just wanted to confirm where we're going.
Okay.
Uh, on commercial, uh, that designed on page seventy-two, when you have a. Basically, the frontage along the commercial streets is bumper to bumper.
Mm-hmm. Are you saying the one, two, three, four, five, six buildings is just stacked up, you know, just, yeah, bumper to bumper? That's, yeah, and I just think um, under, you know, studies, Matt? Or Jennifer, I mean, are, I, I'm reading a lot about economic development these days. And studies are showing that retail is waning. It's not, you know, it's not robust. It's, and it's not because we're in a dip, it's because retail itself is waning. So we're kind of, I feel like the concern I have is if we build too much commercials, we end up with a lot of like. Sprint stores and subways and things like that at our gateway. Um, because you, you know, commercial property owners become um challenged and kind of. Forced into a commercial decision to make um about. What types of businesses you want at your gateway, your downtown area. So that kind of. Is a concern that I think. Should be talked about, or is there any, do you have any anecdotal or recent studies that you guys have read? Or, or Jennifer? I mean, what's, what's your take on all of that?
Well, um, I just attended a study session earlier today. Where they were doing a feasibility study about Cascade Department. A CFA um area at Metford. And they, what they said about commercial space is exactly what you're saying. And that is, there is not nearly the amount of commercial retail space that there once was. And I forget how many tens of thousands of vacants. Uh, commercial retail space there are. It's a little bit different, but retail uh, commercial is shifted, so um, you know, it's moved toward experiential. Commercial, so restaurants, coffee shops, things like that. Things that you can't do uh virtually or online. Or just not very satisfying to do that way, so um, those kinds of businesses, you know, seem to continue to do well. Although they're high-risk businesses at the same time. But they do provide opportunities for the local businesses, which, which is a nice thing. Um, but I think your concern about national retailers, for example, are probably apt and not. Just because you might not find a local business to occupy that space, but because it was an actual retailer. Or able to pay a lot more in that, we just give a lot of that to um, a commercial.
And I'll take your question, uh, just as a kind of a secondary remark to that, we do have some of that space built on the ninety-nine. And they're having a difficult time renting to even those folks. Um, just as a, I mean, there's been, there's been some businesses that have speculated that space that would be described as national vendors. And they're not fighting because of the cost of construction, blah, 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 all those things. Uh, member buyers?
Well, first an observation, you just described spaces that people who are living in studios. And smaller apartments gravitate to because it's more room.
Yeah.
Exactly, exactly. Um, but my question is, is there still discussion of perhaps an incubator space? And if so, um, how large?
I have a question. What's an incubator space?
Well, there's um, uh, an incubator, a business incubator space would be a space that provides retail space. And even, and which can include food service space and it. And small-scale manufacturing, exactly. And in fact, maybe in particular. But uh, it tends to be space, space where uh, small-scale manufacturers and small businesses can do business in there. And produce what they're producing in an environment where they get, where they can get additional support. Whether that's through a nonprofit or, you know, there's, there's often technical assistance that comes with that. Um, so it's, it's, it's a space where that supports small businesses in a way that helps them sustain and, and helps them scale up.
And so it's not just like one business in there. It's like a space that supports several businesses.
Right, and there are great examples all around the state of it. I'm probably in California as well. Uh, probably all over the country.
Just really quickly to that point, I think there is a trend in services as well for like repair, restoration. That sort of thing in incubator spaces as well.
Yeah, that's interesting. Uh, member Colay?
Yeah, I know in one of the plans, it was mentioned to have a, a daycare space with any of this commercial space. Like, is there any reason to build it with the intent of like a more specific type of tenant going in there? Um, cause I don't know like what these six spaces are built like, just seeing them on the frontage of the road. My mind goes to like road front, commercial retail, which we're talking about. We don't necessarily need any more of, so. Is the footprint of those buildings something that any type of tenant could occupy? Would you need to change the footprint of the building to accommodate? Something that we would be trying to like attract to town, like a daycare or some other business we feel we need more of?
That's a great question. Member Postizo and then member Medina.
Sort of following up on that, I'm just going back to a few things that sort of made a splash over the years. And at least for me, it seemed like it would be interesting to have in talent and be like some sort of a, a grocery store. And, and or a bank or credit union office. Is that something, I mean, I don't know how likely those. Like those businesses would want to be for talent, but I think those would be benefits to the community. I don't know how real it was at the time, I'm a little dubious, but even like to actually cooperate with rumors that they like open a small. Thing here. I'm not sure that was really viable, but you know, so I'm just wanting, just opening up the conversation based on that. You know, do we need to be thinking of what kind of businesses would really come in here before we can design what kind of space we're in a building?
Yeah, I think the answer is yes. Uh, and the, uh, a part of the answer is also. That's in similar routine ownership of the area where these commercial ads would be located. The city would have flexibility and, and offering incentives to attract the businesses. That they want to see them like a incubator or like a bank. Like other specialty stores.
An incubator space would, would also draw nonprofit funding for building the space that the city would end up owning. That is, that is one other possibility as well. Um, and um, the last time I worked with. Rogue Credit Union, they're still holding position that they don't want to open a bank in talent. Because they opened up a second location in Ashland and they have a bank in uh, Southgate. Um, but they did say that they'd be interested in building one of those live-teller kiosks. Um, the problem with those though is that they're typically drive-through. Anyway, I'm sorry, member Medina.
No, that's okay. Sorry, I'm going to take us back to the childcare daycare thing. Um, so one of the things post-fire, one thing that happened after the fire is a lot of people who did at-home childcare. Um, were like in trailer parks or they were renting and at that time landlords would allow them to do that. And there's a lot of programs out there that they will come and they will like get your household ready for childcare, do the safety stuff. Um, train you, give you a lot of things like for, for your low cost, so people can start childcare. The issue is now, post-fire is that trailer parks aren't allowing that anymore, like the ones like. I know my trailer park renewed like shortly after Arlie, so we can't do childcare anymore. I don't know about the new ones in Arno. And I know a lot of apartments that have been built up, townhouses that are renting, it has in there, you cannot do a business out of your rental. And so that's a big barrier for childcare, but I've spoken to people, they say if there's like a space that they can afford to rent out. And like to do childcare, they would totally go for it. But as far as like building it to like code. Or um, the state of Oregon, it's like if they can go in, I feel like if they can go in and get like my trailer all retrofitted for childcare. They can probably like whatever is built can be fitted for it.
You know, there's, and, and you know better than I do, but there's also a huge funding package coming down from the state.
There is, yes.
And that's why I think a childcare space like the one that they have at Concord. In the multifamily building on the bottom floor would be, if it doesn't trigger. It prevailing wages, for one thing, it would be in the interior of the property.
Not right.
Um, rather than along the highway and um, and I, you know, I mean, that, the one in the Concord is pretty impressive. It's kind of small, I think. Yeah, it's really great. I think, I think we could and should do better than that, but um, but for workforce housing where families are having. And with all the resources that are coming down.
So many.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, member Postizo?
Paycare, like especially in the interior, I wonder what's the, it brings me back to the parking situation, right? People are coming, dropping up kids, picking up kids, you know, having to do a hike to get there. To me, it seems like it would be a little bit of a deterrent.
Yeah.
It's been a long time since I've been bringing kids to daycare.
It does mean that we need to look at that again. Uh, member buyers and then member Colay.
If that is something that we're interested in, then all the more reason to prioritize green space.
Yeah, and there is green space in here. I just don't know if it's adequate.
Well, then perhaps ensuring that it's fenced and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Made safe.
Yeah. Member Colay?
Yeah, just kind of like thinking through all those thoughts that were said, um. At least on the picture that's on page seventy-four, the, the housing portion of it that's on there. Makes a lot of sense to me, like with the footprint and the way it's laid out, and it's not exactly how it's going to be. But thinking about that people probably, we're not going to probably put housing on the road frontage. That may be a better place to put something like a daycare with member Postizo's comment about accessibility. It not being necessarily interior and hidden and then um, accompanying that with the green space. Hopefully the existing green space of the perimeter trees that are around there being incorporated, but maybe that's an area where we could. Have, have the green space out there, have maybe some alternate business ideas like we've talked about. And then maybe save room for additional housing if needed, because again, like we mentioned, it might not be desirable to. Frontage on ninety-nine for housing, maybe Valley View is a little more desirable, because it's not as busy of a street. Still the entrance to town, so.
Um, if you look at the, page seventy-two, um, it shows color, it's a color picture. As, as uh, councillor, our member, Penamur points out, and so it does, that, that just, that just gives you a picture of where the greens are.
My question for that though, is, is that green space usable green space by people or is that all?
Oh, yeah, maybe you're right. Yeah, maybe you're right. Okay.
Purples.
My bad.
Green.
Um, where, where this would be to that point that you just made about being along the highway. It would be interesting to look at that in the south corner of the, the, the south corner of the. Cause it's away from the, the biggest traffic mechanisms, the roundabout, the light. Um, and there is a drive, there is a uh, apron just to the north of it. It's sort of, you could, you could almost get away with doing some kind of buffer there without really disrupting the look of the entire project. Uh, member buyers?
Well, to councillor, councillor Colay's point and to something I read in your, part of your report. And from what I'm referencing here, the trees that are currently planted along ninety-nine are not a part of this plan. So I think that's another part of the discussion.
Yeah, the whole streetscape in general.
Um, one of the other things um, that would be interesting to talk about is turning the childcare into incubator space as well. Where technical assistance can be provided to childcare providers, the technical assistance that's being. That's being offered by the state, where you could actually educate childcare providers. The idea being that they graduate into, into, into other spaces, so that we're actually creating a s. We maintain the ownership and we're creating a space where we actually have the ability to grow childcare in our communities, rather than just that one standing space.
Yeah, there's a lot of like programs that do that already. Um.
What would be, is it, do you think it's competitive?
Trying to think, I mean.
Well, that's a detail we can work out.
Yeah, that's a detail we can work out later. Like I can see the need um, for it, but I would have to think like the logistics. Is a part of it that I'm, that I'm getting caught up in.
Great question to ask.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and, and then, you know, one of the things that we talked about with the incubator space on Valley View. Is that it connects right into that dead zone that, that could be repurposed or outdoor market. Can be um, market under solar panels, it could be um, and that, that area can be electrified. And um, and we would be able to attract organizations like Rogue. What's, Rogue, yeah, Rogue Food United Source, um, the Rogue Valley Market, what is that called? The one that.
The Growers Market.
Market that moves around. They don't come into town, they don't really have a good space to set up.
Yeah.
But then you've got like this connectivity and what's down at the end of the block is Talent Maker City as well. So there's just like this, this. Potential for a lot of development, ongoing development. For businesses and it is kind of a way where you can kind of capture the type of businesses that you want in your community. Question, um, councillor Penamur?
Yeah, so we've talked about, I, I do love the commercial on Valley View. Um, as far as on ninety-nine, um, I thought at least one iteration that was like. I think that was senior housing, there was a building, maybe a little bit setback that was residential. My question is, um, with, you know, modern architectural double pane, triple pane windows or whatever. Um, is that, is that a real, we're assuming that's um, that we don't want to have residential ninety-nine. I'm just wondering, is that still, is that real or are there things that you can do that you can handle residential? Still, is that real, or are there things that you can do that you can handle residential on on the on the highway?
You can, um, there are studies that have been on, uh, you know, connecting between. Direct exposure or, uh, uh, you know. Equally higher traffic corridors, um, and certain. So.
Small.
Yeah, so there there are ways to mitigate that, probably some of those impacts persists. Um, there's, you know, kind of. Although ninety nine. Impactless where some of the, you know, corridors that. That was actually one of the issues that came up in a climate. A C of A has to be. But a lot of high density housing along. You know, high traffic.
Yeah, I would, I would also add, I mean, you can, I mean, people don't want to live right at that street edge on the heavy traffic, but you can also buffer it with a. A more generous landscape area um, to create a sense of privacy and and a good pedestrian environment for people walking on the street.
I have a question.
Uh, councillor, uh, excuse me, member Colay?
Yeah, on that note, there's some um, profiles of the. I think it's the street view of either Wagner Street or Valley View, but. Yeah, it's Wagner Street and some potential options for what it would look like. Is Valley View and ninety nine as it exists currently, how the streetscape's gonna be? Forever, or is there any plans, I don't, I don't know about long term plans for. Sort little section of West Valley View or ninety nine?
Three lane?
Three lane or. Landing trees on the outside, kicking the sidewalk in and or protected bike wait, like any, yeah, just like changing the streetscape?
I don't know, I mean, in short section of Valley View was developed, I believe in conjunction with the roundabout. I mean, modifications to that with some kind of the roundabout. Which, um, but I I don't know of any plans to. Modify Highway ninety nine, I I have to.
We can't modify ninety nine, it's not our, it's not our jurisdiction.
Right.
I also know that the. The reprofiling of Valley View for the roundabout. Was subject to some pretty intense traffic studies, but I think width and all of that kind of stuff is what is what. Determines what kind of vehicles can be on that road, so I think it would trigger a. Another one of those. Now, we tried to do that for a turn lane that would go on to uh, right across from the old subway and. Uh, it was. It ended up being quite the, quite the project that talent eventually just abandoned.
Have another.
Um, I'm sorry.
This is like.
Memory, I mean, member Penamur?
Memory lane question, um, it was in the time where short term rentals was a hot topic. Um, you know, like six years ago and stuff like that, and I think we were talking about like commercial space, we were hearing that commercial space was hard to. There wasn't a demand for commercial in in talent and that, you know, those commercial could like potentially be. Used as some sort of flex space or or some um, and even be used for short term rentals, which was. Uh, a thing of demand at that time, so I'm just wondering, um. Do you remember that conversation?
I don't.
Okay, I think it might have been Jason.
Yeah.
Who who brought that up, but it was, it was just an idea of, um, because we were told. Hey, yeah, you can build the commercial, but it's not gonna. Necessarily be useful, but because housing was so hard to come by and short term rents. Really hot, you know, that that could be um, an option. But we would, these buildings would be commercial grade regardless, right? If they were going to be commercial, there's another idea to throw the next.
All right, um, and then, you know, I do want to also, um. Say that there, there's gotta be a list somewhere and I I'm struggling to find out when and where, but. There was, there has been a lot of discussion at just about every town hall about what kind of businesses this town wants to see there. And, um, I mean, I, at one point in time, I I remember somebody talking about a rooftop bar, so I mean, the conversations have happened. So, uh. I mean, I I I also know that feasibility study is, you know, and you can want a rooftop bar, but if it doesn't.
You can build a rooftop bar, but you can't.
You can't make people drink, yeah, although Flutere's probably got a pretty good business for their rooftop bar, but. Um, anyway, my point being that I think for the types of businesses, the people have really given a lot of input for that. And some of these community turrets, and I just wonder if we've been able to find anything like that. I think Salazar took a lot of that information, but so did Walker Mason. Be worth looking at. Member buyers?
I mean, to councillor Prestizo's. Wait, I think the grocery store comes up in every conversation.
I, so just, I I'll remember that we paid for a market study for. Ashland Co-op.
I remember the outcome too.
They said, no way, um, so it's just. And um, and we recently had a pretty sizable grocery store. Place look at the Walmart building and say, no way, um, so I just, you know, I mean, we could probably look at the market study. The the condition we had on that market study with Ashen Coop is that we get a copy of it as well. That we have the market study we use for ourselves too, so. And you know, um, the market, the grocery store that we do have. Um, is is impeded in their ability to be anything other than what they are, based on the square footage that they have. And you'd really have to build something pretty big to be viable, and you look at the Rays and Phoenix and they struggle. And they're bigger and. So.
If, if I'm recalling that study, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm dredging this up. A grocery store could not be supported but a dry cleaner, a bank. Um, and a hardware store, all could be. I'm sure that has changed with Blackbird also being built so close to that, but I mean. That's what I'm remembering from that.
Yeah. And I remember Ace Hardware looked at some spots and determined that that there was not. Enough space on the gateway for them to build enough big enough place for their, for their space to be viable. So then they went, then they went to go look at the space that Lifegate, no, not Lifegate, Life, what's that church, there's a church on the highway just down the street. And um, because they needed, they needed more space. So the 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 other challenge that we have with the gateway is that we're using so much of it for housing and there's so. Uh, and um, that our commercial spaces. Is compacted and that's not real viable for some of these bigger. We need this much square footage in order to make, you know, we need this much retail space in order to make it viable for us. And grocery stores will all, and even when the grocery store was able to look at something like really big. They're, they're like this city. Is a population of six thousand people, we're just, that's really what it boils down to more than anything else is the is the demand, you know, the population size. Um, councillor Penamur?
I'm wondering if we can take a short break?
Yep.
I'm wondering if we should continue to another line.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, I think that'd be.
There's so much to think about.
How much? Well, before we do that then. Um, let's make sure that there's not one, one burning question that which you probably get answered tonight, is. Matt or Gary, is there something that we should address before we convene?
I I think we've uh, got a lot of discussion and information tonight. And hopefully we've imparted some good thoughts to you as well.
Okay, great, man. Go ahead. Yeah, okay, and member Colay?
Just for our purposes, I mean, what's the timeline of revisiting others? Like the peer project has a lot of tight deadlines and stuff, so what's?
Okay, well, it it's tight and it is, uh, so let's look at. Uh, your staff report on page one, two, three, four.
And I just to be clear, the timeline that I was referring to is that they're asking us for a conceptual design in a pretty short period of time, isn't that?
They are.
Has that changed?
They are, but here's the uh, here's the deal, um. Their schedule is, I think it's on page seven of the staff report. Uh, and you'll see there that the uh. Of your procurement of an engineering firm, and this is of the infrastructure project. Is envisioned as occurring in March of this year. That's coming up recently. Uh, and the, uh. Completion of the environmental review, however, is not anticipated until the end of this calendar year.
And the final design isn't due until June of twenty twenty six?
Right, so what we do need some preliminary design. In order to start in procuring engineering work for the infrastructure.
Can I ask?
We need to have a sense of how the project's gonna look.
I think the important question that's gonna be for us is how flexible, if if the final design isn't due till June of twenty twenty six. And they're pushing us for uh, for uh, one in three months, how flexible will that design be between March and June?
I think it has to be. Uh, and we'll have to continue to push to uh, make sure that that is flexible.
It's funny when you say that with. This particular agency, I mean, our experience so far is that they're incredibly inflexible.
But I, you know, I think uh, we have a good understanding of progress of things with them now.
Okay.
They want to see us getting started on the uh, at least. Procuring engineering firm, it's gonna take several months for them to. Start working on other aspects of the project, and of course, the site is anticipated to be cleared until August. Uh, and then if they complete the environmental review, you know, we really can't do an R of. Until the environmental review.
So, procuring the engineering firm by March thirty first, what does that have to do with the. Preliminary design of the project, why are those?
They they need to start planning the infrastructure work on this site that will support the ultimate development.
Okay, it's just not on this, that that is not on this, it on this uh, spreadsheet. The preliminary design being. The due date of the preliminary design is not on this, am I missing it?
Yeah, it it's just.
It's just the same as.
It it jumps from procure engineering firm to complete final design due thirty of twenty twenty seven. So they see a lengthy engineering design.
Is procure engineering firm, is it the same deadline as providing a preliminary design? Is it, do they have the same design, I mean, the same deadline?
No, the preliminary, preliminary design will uh, occur. Probably in step with the environmental review.
Okay, so that that's really until December thirty first, twenty twenty five. So it'll be concurrent with that, okay?
So, you know, so we're in January, but.
And we don't expect an H and A before then, right, we don't expect a housing needs analysis before then.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. All right, well, I gave it one more shot, because that is a different deadline, by the way, than it than it was before.
It looks far away.
I know.
But there's a lot of work.
But it wasn't very long ago that it was sooner than that, and weren't they demanding it right away, weren't they, yeah. Um, cap, a member Prestizo?
Well, I would say that for whatever other reasons, I'd like to follow up with this sooner than later, just because I don't want it to become something I'm trying to remember.
Right.
So that means a couple of.
So, do we have enough where we can provide, what this is what you've talked about so far here, the rough design? What should we, like, can we start to? Draw up a proposal sometime?
Yeah, we we can start having. Yeah, there are some issues that we need to address, like how much landscaping do you want on the site? Uh, and the configuration of wagon. But there's some other uh, parties that are involved and influencing that. That uh, will wait a while.
Well, I I mean, as of this evening, we are, we are adding the possibility of using the plaza as some of that open space. Too, so that might make. Yeah, okay.
So Jennifer, are you still online?
Yes, I am.
Uh, Jennifer, just to ask one question while Jennifer's with us. Uh, you saw the alternative alignments for Wagner Road. Uh, included in the packet that came out of the discussion with. Hell approved district, and they're substantially different. Than the the alignment that's in the West Valley View plan. You you have any initial reactions of that proposed? Changes in alignment?
Um, I mean, I think thinking about how the whole transportation system plan is working together and street alignments is pretty. Critical to you guys having success, and I think that's why the original alignment was done the way it was, um. So. You know, pushing it further south really, um, it has a lot of challenges. Um, as far as getting it to align with another existing street or being offset enough. That it doesn't create a hazard for traffic, um, when streets aren't are across from each other, but offset just a little bit is really dangerous. Um, so I think, thinking about those over larger transportation system um, issues is pretty critical there.
Well, and you're, I'm thinking that your assessment of those alternative alignments is that they. Really, really uh. Don't contribute positively to the circulation and safety.
Really don't.
Yeah, I remember a lot of discussion about that at the time, and part of what we're doing in the land swap. Was because it's pretty critical to have Wagner be pretty much a straight across. But if it starts having traffic, like on the Valley View though, if you have everyone's kind of crazy turn. Yeah.
The other, the other concern, so there's two that I remember, one was by realigning Wagner Street to some other way. Um, it does disconnect traffic from the downtown commercial area, in fact. The people, the businesses down on that end of town had a lot of heartburn when we did not finish that road and. Um, that was going back a ways, but that was one of the initial problems, so reconnecting that traffic supports. Um, supports the commerce downtown in that in that area of town, even though it's just a block away. Uh, but the other big issue was, and you were probably around for this, is that when we, when we looked at realigning. Um, Wagner to further down Talent Avenue or even through Gainis, which I think is the worst of all plans. Um. Uh, it doesn't motivate the people that live up Wagner to use that arm, they'll still use Main Street. Um, because they can cross over on Front, First and Second. And Front, First and Second, the moment we, I mean, not long after we opened this mechanism up, we're in. Before us saying, you've just redirected all of the traffic down our streets, because people are crossing over. These little tiny. Streets to get over to Wagner off Main, so they'll go up Main and they'll cross over instead of. Did, yeah, do you, and and it was, it it's been a real problem, so there, the expectation from. Those neighborhoods is, don't worry, don't worry, we're gonna fix that, and the determination was that if we moved it, it wouldn't fix it, people would not use it, they would use it to go down. The advice we got was that they would use it to go up to Talent Avenue, they. The advice we got was that they would use it to go up to Talent Avenue, and they'd turn left, but not turn turn right and then left, they would just go and continue to use the route that they're not used to using, and then cross over Front, First and Second. I don't know if that's legitimate or not, but I I I would, if we decide to do that, I'd want to see another traffic study.
Yeah, well, I know when I lived on Second at the end of the day, plenty of cars, people were complaining they're going too fast, that they're just commuting through.
So they can get over to Schoolhouse and Lewis J and all of those?
Yeah, there's a lot of housing over there that that have been very route to get to.
And none of those streets were designed to take that kind of traffic, none of them were. And we haven't done anything about it because we've promised that we were it it's not, won't be long, we'll we'll get to Wagner Street, and then, so why why widen first, why widen second, when we're eventually gonna, but in the in the meantime, those little tiny streets are taking traffic that they're not designed to take.
But I felt compelled to present those alternatives that came from the district. And I think after conferring with Salazar for and others that are in hearing this discussion, that those are, those alternatives really don't achieve the goal of how we see safe traffic circulation, improved traffic circulation in the downtown area. That's fair, that's up.
The irony of her comments about offset being unsafe, the fact is, and Hector, you probably remember this, is that Valley View was an offset code, and that's why they they, it was that weird freeway and it it was, it didn't line up, and there was all kinds of issues with it. So that was one of the reasons that kind of got this going. So there's gotta be some grant money to help them move. Councillor, Member Panamera?
Yeah, so as we're wrapping up, I'm just thinking about what Dave said about maybe meeting in another two weeks, I just want to point out the twenty-ninth is one of those fifth Wednesdays. If 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 it would be timely for you, I'd certainly be up for another study session on this.
Okay. We'll try to still set up.
Okay.
I am unavailable that day.
Do you want to look at the calendar now, or should you just shoot some ideas?
We'll get back.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, whenever, I just thought that might work.
I I mean, is anybody else not available on that day?
I am available.
I'm available.
Okay. All righty, so if there's nothing else and there's no other questions, let's go ahead and adjourn this meeting at seven forty-seven.